I can go? Okay. So, I will... The meeting, we opened at 6:30, we had no sound. So, we have fixed that and we will resume the meeting at 6:38. And from there, we did the pledge of allegiance. We will go to the roll call.
Karen Winchester here, Mark Freeman.
Here.
Derek Burton.
Here.
Steve Ruth.
Here.
George Collis.
Here. Agenda approval. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Clerk Winchester, support by Treasurer Freeman.
You never asked for comment, or what did you ever...
Well, I was just gonna say, any discussion?
I just would like, probably guess, to pull out bills for payment.
Okay.
It's a real quick question, but...
Then also, the minutes from 7:21, just a minor adjustment.
Okay. Can we do the minute, the minor adjustment on those and just leave it in the consent agenda if it's minor?
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. So, it's under the third page. All those present voted yes, motion carried four to one, so it should be five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then Steve, do you want to ask your questions?
Well, it was really on the supplement, I think, Karen, that you sent out this afternoon.
Okay.
The large funding for Engineer Farmstead, I didn't know what those were.
That was, we approved that several months ago, but the billings all came in at the same time. Somehow, we got lost in the mail, so those are all pre-approved by contract that the board already approved.
And that was for the site plan?
Yes.
Okay.
So, with those questions answered, we can...
All set, yep.
Yep.
Oh, okay. So, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Clerk Winchester with support by Treasurer Freeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
No, wait a minute, this is, yeah, this is the agenda, but he did that consent, so we can go ahead. So, all opposed, same side, motion carries. Now, we'll go to the consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll support.
A motion to approve consent agenda as amended by Clerk Winchester with support by Trustee Burton. And for that, we'll do a roll call.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
Yes.
Derek Burton.
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. George Collis.
Yes. Motion carries, five to zero. Now, we don't have a public hearing, we don't have any presentation. I will go to reports. Trustee Ruth.
Nothing for me.
And Trustee Burton.
And there was no meeting, so nothing for me.
Okay, then I will go to the Treasurer, Mr. Freeman.
No report.
And I will go to the clerk.
Well, I want to apologize for those who are here that had issues getting the agenda this afternoon. We had some issues with the website, once I was ready to post. And we also had a complaint today about a board on the Township Hall roof that isn't a board. It is an actual diverter, aluminum diverter on purpose for the water. And they were concerned about the maintenance of the building. We've been trying to get people to bid, painting and some of the things that we need done on the Township Hall, and we have not had much luck. We'll keep trying. We will have the window fixed, there's a broken window at the top, and we'll get somebody soon up for that. And that's all I have.
Okay. Supervisors' report. They will start spraying for noxious weeds next week, in particular, the knotweed. I have a map here, if anybody's interested, that'll show you where the treatments will be. There are two Xs on the map that are additional knotweed that were located after the original survey was done. They will be included as well. And then the Fragmities spraying, which I think this is our third year or fourth year now for that, that will be done in October. But those maps are here available if you want. My other report is a letter to the Township Board. Mark, if you pass it now. "To the Holly Township Board. The family of Charles Stewart Mott Harding II has been involved in the Holly Farmstead project since the beginning, when they attended one of our stakeholder meetings back in 2017. As the project continued, they showed their support and eagerness to help make this project a reality for the youth of this community by making a gift of $100,000 to get the project off the ground. They have stayed engaged as the project has developed over the past four years. With the recent completion of the engineered drawings of the plan, I met with the family and we discussed the future of the plan and a timeline to make this happen. The family was eager to see this project become a reality for the community and its youth. They are making an additional gift in the amount of $500,000 to help see this project through. This will allow the township to move forward on the development of this project as a whole, instead of one piece at a time, while creating educational opportunities for our youth and families for many years to come." So, now we will go on to public comment. On agenda items only, members of the public can address the board on agenda items only, once recognized by the supervisor. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation." Is there anybody for public comment? Mackenzie.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Hartz, I live at 7780 Ormond Road, Davisburg, Michigan. I am here to talk about the Holly Heritage Farmstead and how it would affect me and other foragers. So, I have been a forage since fifth grade and I am now going into my 10th grade at Holly High School. And forage has really helped me grow as a young lady. I have learned dedication, working with animals. I have learned responsibility, patience, hard work, and loving just, you know, I can raise and grow up to be a strong, muscular animal to show at Felton County Fair, yeah, in our area. So, I live in Davisburg, Michigan, and I live on a very small property. So, I am not actually allowed to have animals at my property, but I love showing them. So, I have been blessed to have a family that allows me to keep a cat and a cow at their house, but not many people do. And so, this farmstead would give a lot of kids opportunities to enjoy and having an animal to practice with throughout the whole year and then being able to work with it and show it at the fair. And it is, that is huge, because I even know kids that live in Holly that want to show pigs and want to show cows and want to learn how to do all of that, but they live in less than an acre and have not even a room for a dog. And it gives, it blocks your mind off of, oh, I can't do that, but I have the willing and want to. And so, this, this farmstead would give a lot of kids that chance to do that. And there is another place like this, a little farther away, so not near us, called Tollgate. And so, people work there, and kids from the inner cities will come and get a chance to work with animals and practice and practice with them, and then come show at our fair, which is pretty amazing. I just wanted to share how some of it is and how much forage is taught me.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Well, I got three hands. John, let's start with you and we'll go that way.
John Love. I've been involved in the parks here for many years. I tried to save the waterworks, and they gave the records to Mr. Collis and he lost them. They were put together by Ray Bar. The point is, is that I was attending the meetings and they said they had an opening and they asked me if I would be interested in joining the commission, and I said I would do it. But, I didn't realize there was a big hurdle overhaul with the supervisor, because in the past, when I served on the Historic Commission, we had a few problems where he knew more than I did. And I thought I knew something, but I wasn't respected. So, they threw me off the commission. That's not the issue. The issue is, the signage needs to be improved. We have a $300,000 facility that was built, and people don't even know it's, the nature center is there. So, we need to publicize this and make people aware and improve the signage so we can access Sorensen Park. Thank you. So, I'm asking that you simply support the proposal that they made to appoint me to the park commission. And it's, it's not proper for the supervisor to block it in the fashion that he has done. So, that's what my request is to the rest of you. And, incidentally, I have my Sierra Club card saying I was a member since 1998. So, I've been involved in doing this kind of thing. And it's not a matter of whether someone else is qualified. I mean, this other fellow that was recommended, he's been here for two years. I've been here for 20. And I've done something in this community, including saving several historic buildings that would have been demolished if I hadn't intervened. And I'm able to enjoy Freeman's old place, too. So, I just ask that you vote on the proposal that the park commission made to you not to have it interjected by the supervisor in an improper, arrogant way that is just off-base. I served in Vietnam, I was a captain in the Army, ran a school support company, and I wouldn't have tolerated this kind of behavior by anybody. Thank you. Who is next?
Mary Blanchard.
You can put it in the slide.
Try that. Okay, there we go.
Mary Blanchard, 3444 Old Creek Drive, Holly, Michigan. I would like to speak in favor of the Farmstead project in developing the property so residents are able to use it again. I would like to remind the board and residents that Clerk Winchester herself stated in early 2020 that there should be a Farmstead workshop, and that has never been scheduled. In January 2021, during the presentation by Hubble, Roth and Clark and McKenna, the Township planners said that there would be a citizen night two-thirds of the way through the presentation. That has not happened either. The residents will be paying the taxes that are involved with this project. They should be able to have a say. And there's no one in this room, more than Harvey Sorensen and I and other members of our group, the Holly Heritage Farmstead Foundation, that dedicated time, effort and personal money to bring events and, in Harvey's case, provide years of maintenance to those buildings and grounds. Three years ago, we indicated that due to age, illness and even death, our group was going to become, excuse me, a community and farm bank garden group, and we have taken place at Mitchell Farms the last two years. We would welcome renewed activity with the Holly Barn and then proceed with other developments of the Holly Heritage Farmstead property. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melinda Hertz, I live at 7780 Ormond Road in Davisburg. I also wanted to speak on behalf of the Holly Heritage Farmstead. Mackenzie is my daughter, so she just spoke with you a little bit about what opportunities with forage and working with animals has done for her. And I just want to say, as her parent and my other child and all of the kids that I've worked with and seen grow through opportunities, what working with livestock can do for these kids and what it shows them and what they can learn from it, I think is just absolutely incredible. I know some about this plan, I don't know everything, but I know a little bit about the development of it and where it's headed. I think it has so much potential to reach so many children, youth throughout our entire community and beyond, and I just want to speak in favor of it and support in what I think it could do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? I see a hand in the back.
Don't get too close to this thing and be all out. My name is Jacob Cravie, I said a few questions about the Holly Heritage Farmstead plan. I see it's a pretty big development. Has there been any work that would address issues with incoming traffic that can be caused by that and some issues with road wear and tear around that area? If so, is there, like, an answer?
That's, that's part of the engineering plan in conjunction with the road.
So, there's funds allocated for roadwork after? All right, just making sure, because they finally seem to get North Holly in a good, decent, I guess, state. And I was just worried about how seeing the curve coming and there's no lights there either. So, it's a hard road to already turn onto in the opposite lane of traffic, as is. But, if that's the case, that's good. And then, secondly, I just had a statement to make about the Holly Township Parks Board opening. I put in an application. And as soon as I put in an application, I was messaged by multiple people throughout the township in the area telling me that it's kind of futile, apparently, that there's already people set aside for it and that the decision wasn't going to be the decision of the park board itself, and I found that kind of concerning. There wasn't a lot of good advertisement made on that, there was a couple of Facebook posts, but that's it. And I seem to have ran into more people who were worried about putting in an application and just not being heard, so they didn't bother than anything else. So, yeah, I just found that concerning, wanted to bring it up.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, Honorable Members of the Board. Timothy Seal, 459 Riverside Drive, Holly, Michigan, 48442. I rise tonight in support for the Holly Heritage Farmstead. We are a growing community in Holly Township. Just take a look around at the development that's going on. I think it would be a great opportunity for families to visit a center as such. My spouse and I, Michelle, own goats, and the favorite thing for the grandkids to do are to go see farm animals. And to have that type of activity available, not to mention a development of a new Township Hall, which I think is critical to our township as our growth continues to expand. We can't be nickel and diamond our way into board meetings and space for our Township officials. Part of growth in any community is infrastructure. And if you don't improve the infrastructure with the growth, I don't know if anybody's familiar with Canton Township back in their day. That's not how you do the infrastructure after the growth. That was a horrible mistake. So, I rise in support, I thank you for your time. I do have limited time tonight, so will be leaving as I have to go finish building a goat shelter. Appreciate your time and efforts, and I ask residents that you consider this and help push the township to do the right thing with this property, and let's get developed and get moving. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? I thought I saw a hand back that way. No? Okay, we will move on to old business, the appointment of the park commissioner. To answer the question that the one gentleman answered, the state law puts the responsibility of the appointment in the hands of the Township Board, and the Township Supervisor is the one that brings the name forward. We've met over that in the last couple of meetings, so I won't go through that all again. But we did put out a second notice for this, the parks put out a notice originally drawing three names. We put out a second notice, and this time we drew seven, that, as you see on this letter, that submitted applications. One person did it via telephone, which would make a total of eight. I have written my response to the board in regards to these names. If the board, it is in front of the board, if you'd like, I can read it aloud, that's up to the board.
I think it would be good if you did.
Okay. So, to the members of the Holly Township Board, I have received a total of seven resumes in addition to the three that were originally received by the Parks Board for the vacated seat on the Township Parks Board. They are as follows. Lloyd Bigham III, Jacob William, was it Cravie?
Cravie.
Cravie, I'm sorry. Cheryllyn Everly, Sally Hoffman, Thomas M. Kennedy IV, Monica McAllister and Kurt Miskovich. Roberta Pishoda also offered to serve on the board via the telephone. I am happy to see such an interest in our parks and a willingness for people to step up and volunteer their time to serve on the board. One of the responsibilities of the Township Board regarding the parks is to approve their budget, and that has not been without issue over the past several years. Questions asked without answers, along with ongoing debate over the director's salary and areas of concern with many residents. As I read through the resumes, Mr. Miskovich stands out as a person who would bring a much-needed value to the Parks Board with his organizational skills, business skills and his team leadership and experience. With half of the board being new, this is their first experience running an organization, and I think his skillset would be of value. Being semi-retired, as he stated in his request, he has time available to invest in these projects. Additionally, at the last Township Board meeting, the director, Tony Brinker, spoke in public comment regarding Mr. Miskovich with a positive review, in my opinion. I felt this was an endorsement of her willingness to work with Mr. Miskovich. I have confirmed this willingness in a follow-up phone call with Ms. Brinker. All of these things being taken into consideration, I believe Mr. Miskovich is the right person to fill the position at this time. My second choice would be Mr. Kennedy.
One question, you said in the first sentence, volunteer their time? This is a paid position, correct? Or is it...
Yes.
Twenty-five a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was reviewing this Michigan Township Association Member Information Services. It says, filling Township Board vacancies. To me, that means this board, the Township Board.
No, through all my research and legal stuff with elections, that includes other Township Boards, which happen to be Library Board and Park Board.
Okay, so if some, if there's a vacancy on the Library Board, we follow the same process?
Yes.
But that hasn't always been done in the past?
I was gonna say, whether we have in the past or not is, is another issue, but that's according to the law. So, what is the board's pleasure?
I also would like to make sure the board is fully aware that we're under no obligation to follow any recommendation by the supervisor, but the supervisor, by law, does make recommendations.
Yeah, that's why you have the ability to vote yes or no.
So, we're absolutely sure that the parks, as well as the library, comes under this same legal documentation?
I'm 100% sure.
Okay.
Did Mr. Love remove his name from consideration?
No. I said in the first paragraph, these are some, is there in addition to the three that were originally received?
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve Kurt Miskovich as the Holly Township Parks Board member.
Support.
So, there's a motion by Trustee Burton with support by Clerk Winchester. Any further discussion?
The only thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, looking at these names, I had it down to about four, so I wanted to see, or had potential, and that was because they were names I had never heard before. In 2018, I had put it, sent an email out to nobody in this room about being on a board position that was opened. Didn't get called back, didn't get emailed, and I'm pretty, I mean, I can't, speculation, but I would assume it's because I was not a known person. Again, I was nobody on this board, but we do see that happen sometimes, especially in smaller towns. So, I was encouraged to see all these new names, and that is why one of my choices was one of those new names.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Steve Ruth.
No.
Derek Burton.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
No.
Karen Winchester, yes. George Collis.
Yes. Motion carries.
No.
What?
Oh, yeah, it does, I'm sorry.
Three to two. Now, the Holly Farmstead Development Plan. As you know, at the last meeting, it was on the agenda, and I pulled it at the last minute. And the reason I pulled it is this donation, or this gift, had become apparent the day before the meeting, so there wasn't time to make any changes. But this size of a donation makes a change on how we go at the development of the property. So, the engineering plan that was in front of us in last month's meeting and was just for the parking lot and the roadway itself, and it included the fence across the front of the property. With this donation, we won't have to go at this project a piece at a time. We'll be able to do the development all at one time. So, these engineering, this next engineering step is the actual engineering for the grade, what has to be done and how it has to be developed, and it will set us up then to put out the RFP for that work. That's going to take some time, obviously, there won't be any work started on this, certainly not this year. Hopefully, next year, but we'll see how that goes as we travel, because we have to look at infrastructure, what's going to be needed, septic fields, things like that. To answer the questions of Mr. Cravie regarding the roadway, we were fortunate enough to know that we were working on this project. So, when the roadway was done, Open County Road Commission picked HRC to do the engineering for the entire North Holly Road project, and they did that because they're our engineer as well. And in that project, our engineers were able to look at putting in the acceleration and de-acceleration lanes at the time. The unfortunate part was we couldn't do all the work at the time, because that was a federal grant money, and under federal grant, you're not allowed to do anything outside the scope of the work that is designated. So, that, just to answer your question, those were looked at, they were considered, and where those openings are, are according to the rules and regulations of the Road Commission. You'll notice in front of the existing barn, on the northern part of the southern half of the property, there's a kind of a donut in front of the barn. That is for ADA compliance and it's for unloading. However, that gate will be closed, that will only be allowed for events, so it won't be a regular entrance, it'll be a service entrance. The actual, the only two entrances to the property are the one in the center and the one at the north end. The driveway for the south house will remain, but it will strictly remain as a driveway to that house. The driveway to the north house will no longer exist. That will be served either from one side or the other, based on the entrances that are there. to answer that question on that. So I met with HRC, and they put together, rather than just engineering the piece, and we don't, this way, we don't have to pay engineers every time they come out for the next step. They'll be able to engineer the whole development. And that, the results of that project, will not allow us to issue RFPs and get contractors to do that kind of work.
Alright, well, I appreciate the details. I just had some concerns with load-bearing issues on the road.
Nope, I understand.
And accidents. That's a very friendly spot for deer to fly through your windshield.
Uh, we know. We keep scooping them up off there.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay. Any, any other discussion from the board?
Does this include the new Township Hall?
Yes.
And that's enough to cover that? Or do we still have?
Just, just from the engineering standpoint.
Okay, from the engineering standpoint, okay.
And, and just so you know, the new Township Hall is gonna be a separate part only from the standpoint of, we're gonna have to, this board, we're gonna have to find an architect. We're gonna have to meet with an architect to determine what our needs are, what we feel our needs will be going into the future, so that we can design that building. Once we get that phase of it done, then they can plug in the specifics of that building. Right now, that's just a concept portion that's there. It represents where the building would be.
I would move to approve the Holly Heritage Farmstead Master Plan, Phase One Implementation for Engineering.
Motion by clerk Winchester, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Ruth. Any further discussion?
So after they start engineering the plan, do we know how long it takes? I mean, obviously, we'll have to vote on this, but how long it'll take for us to come out of the next part, and we actually start breaking ground and things like that?
Well, once they complete this, then we're gonna have to enter the RFP portion to find the contractors to actually do the work. So one thing I've learned after being in office for five years now is not to speculate on a timeframe, because it never works.
Yeah.
You know, at the last meeting, Treasurer Freeman mentioned that it had been three years with the existing barn project, and we lost an entire year when the board decided last year that no, nothing would happen on the Farmstead, because we had the road construction and COVID. So we've, we've lost it. Now, we've been trying to get contractors for the door and for the back of the barn, and if anybody's tried to get a contractor lately, they're not out there. This is an unusual job. They're out there grabbing the quick, easy, fast jobs. And I've talked to a couple of guys through Michigan Barn Restoration. Dean Sutton actually came out, looked at the property, and he'd love to do the property, but he said, "I'll tell you right now, I'm booked through September of next year." So he was a year out.
And then the rates are enormous, too.
Well, and yeah, it's, it's, it's the old supply and demand that's an issue out there. So the good news is, is with this engineering plan, we're not gonna do anything physical on the property until we get the doors on the building replaced and the back wall replaced. That'll obviously become first.
Yeah.
But to be able to tell you when we would literally break ground and start pushing dirt around, it's hard to predict that until we get there.
Yeah.
There, there'll be a whole lot of permitting process through the Health Department for septic fields. Who knows what we're gonna have to do for infrastructure like electric and, and gas and those kinds of things? So there's a whole lot of things up ahead of us as we get there.
Can I amend my motion to add that it would be per the August 12, 2021 letter?
Sure, you just do.
Okay.
Mr. Ruth, are you okay with that amendment?
August 12?
Mm-hmm. It's at the top of the letter, right here.
Okay. Oh, gotcha. For the HRC.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion as amended is to approve the engineering plan based on the letter from August 12, 2021. Roll call, please.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Now, we'll move on to new business, which is the Farmstead Barn Front Door Proposals. You have two people that responded to the second RFP that we put out. Since the time of the RFP for this, we had an offer come in. The gentleman that did the remodel for the Battle Alley Coffee Shop across the street has offered to come in. He has community service time that he has to serve. And he has a couple of other people, Amy knows of another person that has community service that is a contractor as well. And they have offered to do the doors on the front of the building. The village would pay for the materials. Or, and the township, I'm sorry. The township would pay for, oh, hey, if the village will pay for the materials, the township. We got one of the councilmen right here.
No.
He's shaking his head no. Alright, well, we'll go back to the township then. So the township would pay for the materials. We had a materials list produced for the RFP, and I believe it was under $2,500. I found it interesting that that materials list was in the bid packet. And both of these contractors, one of them committed $4,500 for the materials, and the other one committed $4,000. I'm not sure I understand that, when we supplied a material list with the price from Curtain Lumber. And all you would have had to do was update it, and I've been told that if we update the list we had, it's actually gone down, because lumber prices are coming down.
They might have anticipated the opposite, because that's what was going on.
I just thought it was interesting that we were under 25, and both of these came in at four and 45. So my recommendation at this point would be to table this first one for now and, and let these gentlemen do their public service time. We've had other people do community service for the township, and over the time.
Shouldn't we approve the purchase of the materials for the?
Yeah, I just was referring to tabling the RFP.
Right.
And, and look at this one with the township paying the material on that part of the project. The second RFP has to do with the back of the building, and that's a different story. That's a much larger project than, than the doors out in the front.
And these individuals are licensed and insured?
Yes.
Yeah. It's the same gentleman that did all the work at Battle Alley Coffee, the remodel there, where they took the building, took the walls out, had to re-invent, I mean, he did quite a job, if anybody's been in there.
We've had TTHP Construction do work for the township before.
Right.
So both of them are really good, significantly different in price.
Yeah.
We, yeah, we thought the 33 was a lot.
Well, it's my understanding they have, they have accumulated 360 hours of community service to do. So there's plenty of time there to get the
The doors.
The doors on the front of the building.
Okay, so they're doing that with, at the $9,000 rate?
No, they're doing it at the cost of material.
Oh, okay.
For the front doors, yes.
Their labor's free, because it's under community service.
Okay.
So we would be purchasing the materials?
We would be purchasing the material at the price that Curtain Lumber gave us. What I would propose is that we approve $3,000, because right now, the current price is just under 2,500. But if anything incidental came up along the way, we'd have some room to cover that.
So are we doing that under number one?
Yeah, that's the front door proposal.
So I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the materials per the materials list from Curtain Lumber for the front doors, not to exceed 3,000.
There we go.
I'll support.
Motion by clerk Winchester, support by trustee Burton. Any further discussion?
I just don't know if 3,000 is enough to cover that.
The front doors?
Just some materials.
I understand.
There, there are two doors, there are, just so you know, there are two doors 12 feet high by 23 feet. And, and the hardware on the top.
And you said you've been given a quote of 2,500 for that?
Curtain Lumber supplied us a materialist. Curtain Lumber did the drawings for what needs to be replaced. I worked with Rob.
Hardware and everything?
Yep, it's the hardware. And the hardware, just so you understand, the current hardware is over 100 years old, and it's rusted, and the building, when they put it out, they just mounted it to the boards. The new plans show a header across the back, and the, the old hardware, the doors had rollers, they hung on the hardware. The new hardware rollers, if, if you've used any of it on your buildings, has a cap on the top, so the wind can't blow the door up and down and blow it off. So it would be a totally new rail across the front, and then the doors would be built in the same way. And the existing doors that are in the building would be saved. The wood that's on those doors would be used to plug holes around the barn where repair work needs to be done.
Would you be more comfortable if we upped it to four, Steve?
Or even 3,500 or something like that, yeah. I just.
I would amend that for, to be 3,500.
Okay.
Well, that's up to Mr. Burton to say, "Okay."
Yeah.
It's his, it's his second.
Now, the only question I have real quick is this $500,000 that we got, that, that can be used towards this? There's no stipulations on what for that project that can be used?
And we still have some of the $100,000 left from the original.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
That'd be okay with that support, then?
Okay. So the motion as amended is for, do you know his name?
Yeah, Matthew Halberstadt.
No, that's this guy.
Yeah.
That's not who's doing the doors. It's the community service guy.
Right. No.
Okay. So, so the motion is to allow the work to be done?
By TTHP, I thought.
No.
No?
By, by community service.
Community service.
I don't have a call for it.
Okay. Yep. The, the motion's actually to approve the purchase of the materials.
Amy's gonna oversee, Amy will oversee the project.
Okay.
Not, not to exceed $3,500. And that's supports by trustee Burton.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. Derek Burton?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Now to the Farmstead Barn Back Wall. The drawings and the material list were included with this RFP as well. That work being done by Curtain Lumber. And the bids you have in front of you. One bid for $33,000, and the other bid is at $60,000.
Did they go out and actually survey the place? I mean, so they?
TTHP did. If, if Crandall Brothers did, it wasn't, I wasn't with them, it wasn't by appointment. I can't say whether they stopped on their own. But TTHP, I went out and met him on the property, and we walked the project.
And my thoughts is, you know, TTHP is less expensive, and they are also a Holly company. So I think they would have more pride in the workmanship that they would provide to something that would be in Holly.
Yeah, well, understand, we gave these RFPs out to everybody we could find in southeast Michigan, to the Michigan Barn Restores. Curtain Lumber passed them out at the door. These are the only two that came in. Dean Sutton came out, and he was excited about the project. But he's the one that, and he's part of Michigan Barn Restores. And he told me, he said, "I'm booked through next September." And, and on this particular project, I don't think we want to wait that long. And, and if you remember, the first time we put the RFP, we only got one back. And this time, we passed out, we divided it into two separate projects. And we did it much more thorough. We actually went on some websites for contractors, and, and, you know, that belonged to southeast Michigan organizations, and sent them out, and we literally got nothing.
Is this, you know, set up to where this is going to look original, I guess you could say? Or, I mean, are they gonna try to match as best as they can?
Yeah, if you, I'm sorry, you're new to the board. We actually had the drawings. They're I think I have them. Thought I brought those with me tonight.
I just didn't want like a neon red board sticking on the side of the building.
These are designed to look exactly like what was there before, Old Firm. The difference is between the old wall and this wall. The old wall had multiple doors in different areas. With the redesign of, of the new foundation, there will be a door on the south end, just as before. The doors that went across the back will only be one set of doors in the middle. And then on the north end of the building, there will be a pat, a, a 36-inch people door, instead of a sliding door. And these doors will all be mounted, so that they're not just free-swinging doors, they'll actually be, so we can lock them in place. And so for, so that, that's the difference. But as far as the look, it's all just like it was before. Now, this also has the two box stalls in front. And I'll tell you, they're just gonna look like box stalls. Because the stalls that were there before, this was a family that didn't have a lot of money. This was a family in a time when you used what you had available. And they were multiple different-sized boards. Some of them had paint, some of them didn't. It just was what it was. These will be more like what you expect to see a box stalls look like in the building. And we're replacing those, just so you know, because as future events happen at this barn, if somebody has horses and needs a place to put them, they'll be able to put them in those stalls, and they'll be usable. And at the same time, they are in the same place that the other stalls were in. So they're, they're historically accurate as to location, but they will look a little more they'll look a little newer than obviously what was there. And, just so you know, the folks, Mark, the people that bought your whole place, what's his name? It sounds like a rock star.
Jim Morris.
Jim Morrison. I was out at their place. They have redone the inside of that barn and the stalls. And when I was talking about this process, they have a daughter that is into, she's a Jackie and does horse racing around the country, and they had redone those. Have you seen them, the work they did?
Not on the inside.
Okay, so they redid the stalls, and they ordered these black bars that you see on the top of the box stall, so that the horses jump up and stand, they can hit the bars. They can't put their head through them, but they're strong. They ordered, and when I told her about our barn, she looked at her husband, and she said, "Come here." She took me in the back toward the riding area, the arena. They have a set of bars. They ordered too many. They're worth about $9,000. She said, "You can have them." So that was something that we were gonna have to add, and, and those will be available to us. Just, just so you know, we've had a lot of people since this project started step forward with donations and things to, to add, along with services as well. We have somebody that said, "When you're ready to plant the trees, let me know, and get them delivered, and I'll plant them." So we've had a lot of people step forward in this project. Any other discussion?
Yeah, on the, on the Crandall Brothers estimate, they're showing a demo and disposal, disposal of existing barn wall for $10,000, but TTHP does not show that.
Well, that's because there is no, well, this is why I don't think they even came out.
Right.
Yeah, because there is no fault of them.
Well, their bid makes no sense. They, they have materials and delivery of 20,000. The material list is under 10.
Right.
So I, I'm not sure.
And final cleanup and touch-up, yeah.
Yeah, I can't explain.
Sometimes they just throw out a real high bid, and then say, "If we get it, great."
Yeah.
Well, so I said, I, I can't begin to defend or explain their bid. They didn't contact me. I was not in the property with them, but they were one of the two bids that came back.
So I'll make a motion to approve the use of TTHP Construction LLC for the Farmstead Barn Back Wall Stalls and Doors Proposal.
Support.
So motion by trustee Burton with support by clerk Winchester. Is there any further discussion?
I just had one thing really quick. Third bullet item, installing a 42-inch service door. We've mentioned 36 as the people door.
Okay. Forty-two, I, I was just trying to make the difference between a barn door and a?
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
It's, it's just a door so that you can get into the building without having to open the whole wall.
Forty-two inches is pretty big. Thirty-six is typically normal. You can do it a horse through that one, because we do.
Okay.
Good. Good.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. Derek Burton?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Now we will go from that to the third item on new business. And that is, um, the recording secretary opening contract.
It said opening?
It says opening. That's why, that's what stole me.
Oh, I think that was, well, sorry, but it is.
Well, go ahead and open it up.
This means recording.
Well, I did go out for, um, uh, a recording secretary and I only received one back. And, um, I, you know, I've had, I've had feelers out for, for months now. Um, and as well as, um, you know, going out and actually putting it out there. And, um, I believe that, uh, Nicole would be, um, a great asset. She'll have a little bit to learn. She hasn't done it before, but she's experienced with government. And so I think she would be good at it. And this is the same contract we've used for, geez, I want to say at least ten years that I remember.
So are we approving the contract or are we approving the hiring of Nicole?
Um, both. It's, it would be her contract and...
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, chair would entertain a motion. You want to make it?
I would make a motion to approve the recording secretary contract with Nicole Rankin.
Okay, support. Motion by Winchester, support by Ruth. Any further discussion?
And is my understanding, because I had this conversation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me back up. That support was treasurer Freeman.
Yep.
And just for everybody else to be clear, I did get some clarification. We did ask staff and that, uh, that was not an option this time.
Yes.
Yeah, because I was thinking over time, it looked a little, might, might have sweetened the deal, but, and bent cheaper for us. But no, unfortunately, it doesn't sound like this case.
It's a real, um, challenging thing to do.
Well, I say, we've actually had staff try it.
Yes.
And staff said, don't want to do it anymore.
And this was put out for like a bid, I guess, so to speak?
Yes.
Yep.
So, uh, then does the recording secretary also record minutes for the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay.
NCBA.
And the DD.
Yep, says at hundred eight, township board, planning commission, and zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
And then can we make these minutes as detailed as we'd like, I assume? Add more detail in there or?
Um...
There is state law that dictates what has to be in the minutes.
Okay.
If there's anything additional that we as a board would like shown in the minutes, then...
Specific, yeah, but it, it, I, yeah, historically, it's, um, in general.
Okay. And then this, these rates that were provided in here, that does not, does that include the time that it would take to compile the minutes? Type them out, or is that additional?
No, it's not additional. It's just for the time here and then they have to
Okay.
provide the minutes.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Karen Winchester, yes. Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. IT Service Proposal. That goes back to Karen again.
Yes. Like, I kind of summed it up in the, the memo, um, to you. And there's very few, um, companies that have the ability to, to do, I think, a good service to a municipality. Um, and so, uh, in your packet, you have the new quote from our existing IT company and one from IT Right that does just solely, uh, government units. And they did come up, you know, with a, a lot less than our current IT people.
Which do you recommend, since you're the one who has lived with the current one?
Um, I, I really would like to try, um, IT Right. I think we could always go back. I, I'm not very pleased with our current IT that just decided that they were gonna split their company and double our fee.
The fee was pretty high.
Yeah, it's very high and I, I, I don't see a justification for it.
So you're adv-
And I've, I've actually, and I've went out, uh, there's recommendations. I've called on IT Right and I really think they are a good company.
So you're advocating for the contract that is for twelve thousand eight hundred dollars?
Yes, but it's only ten thousand after the first startup. Two thousand of it is the startup fee.
So is this, so the contract itself is ten thousand eight?
Yes.
Is it a one, and it's a one-year contract?
Yeah.
Okay, because it says annual.
A- annual, so I guess annual until we...
But is this, is this this rate for the next three years or this rate for one year?
This, I, you know what, I, I'm not sure that answer really.
Oh, okay.
So it should be at the end, I think, right, the, probably the first year.
Then a month, a month after that, maybe?
Yes, and it's usually always the same. We've had the same
Okay, I just, I just was asking.
Yeah, I, I did not read that. If we want to take a few minutes to read the end.
If we could sign a contract for three years at the same rate, I'd go for it.
Okay. Well, I can ask them if they'll do it for three.
We'll see how they perform first.
Yeah.
[laughing]
Thank you.
And, but I will say, you know, in their defense, being in a lot of implementation of different software and stuff, I find those that are more specialized for what you're hiring them for, you have much better results. And they already kind of, the kinks worked out of the system. As opposed to, you know, those who just service any organization or any business.
Right.
So...
They've done, you know, a fairly good job. We've had, you know, kind of mishaps here and there. Um, but that's usually because of the people. If you, they, somebody leaves, you get new ones and then you have to go through a cycle of painful events where you don't get service sometimes when you need it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it seems like, um, IT Right has a lot more, uh, resources available to them.
Yep, and a lot of municipalities listed on these sheets here.
Yes, yes.
Plus, they're, they're located in Bath, Michigan.
Mm-hmm.
That's where the headquarters should be. SNA Software is located.
Yeah.
And they're, they've worked closely with BSN Software.
Yes.
Digital medics, when we first started with them, were not overly familiar with BSN Software.
No.
And I wasn't always fully satisfied with their service.
Right.
As I say, we've had them for the five years that I've been here. And just recently, they finally got the room cleaned up so that that looks nice. And that you don't have wires everywhere and, and, and with all of that that they've done, we couldn't get the computers to go on today. So it was like, it seems to be in that right.
Well, that was the website, not the computer.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
But isn't that what they service?
No.
Oh, okay.
BSN Services are website.
So what's the board's pleasure?
Well, they
Yeah, they
they download their, they download information
Yeah, don't, right.
to the website.
Chair would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we contract with IT Right on an annual basis for the first year, uh, for our IT services.
Support that.
You, you want to add to your motion the contract amount?
And the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred dollars.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah, let's look at that.
Motion to approve, um, IT Right at a cost of twelve thousand eight hundred annual. Actually, it's a cost of ten thousand eight hundred annual with a two thousand dollar startup for a total of twelve thousand eight hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen Winchester, yes. Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Okay, next on the agenda is the Holly Area Youth Assistant Contract. Um, do I go to Steve Ruth for that or Karen?
Karen.
Okay, this is Okay. This is our annual, um, contract with, uh, Holly Area Youth Assistance to provide services to our youth in the amount of twenty-six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And just so you know, this is a, a similar contract in structure that Rose Township and Groveland Township have. The numbers are different based on the student population. But, uh, the three townships are, and I think even Springfield's been popped, yeah, even Springfield.
And the Village.
And the Village of Holly and, if I remember correctly, White Lake Township, yep. So it's, it's the contract that all, it's, all of the communities put forth the money to help fund this organization. And we have somebody that sits on there, well, I'm a board member and Steve Ruth is on as well.
And they were the, uh, sponsor for my son's team ball team. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but just for clarity, this is not a donation.
No.
This is to help pay for the, the office. Office personnel and office expenses. That is what the municipalities are contributing to.
Okay.
And we're a, a acting member.
Right. The, my question would be is, it's been two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars for all the years I've been on the board. That's twelve years, thirteen years. I'm just wondering if we should, maybe not now because we want to go ahead and pass this, but going forward, we may look at whether we may want to increase that. Because I'm sure the costs of operating that office have increased over the last twelve years.
Guess we need to look at their finances.
How is that determined, the twenty-six, twenty-five? That's what it was when I was first elected to the board.
I believe that's what it's been since I've been here and that's twenty-two years.
What I can do at the next meeting is ask about this amount. We can approve this tonight and if we need to amend the amount, we can come back.
Okay.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the agreement between Holly Area Youth Assistance and Holly Township. For twenty-six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. For two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Motion by treasurer Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by trustee Ruth. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next is the charitable gaming license for the United Veterans of Michigan. Proposed resolution twenty-two-one-seventeen. You want to handle that one, Karen?
Yep, so any gaming license, uh, through the state of Michigan has to come, uh, from the, uh, local municipality that they're gonna be doing the, um, like raffle or whatever they are requesting to do at the state level. We have to approve it. So that's what this is.
Then if I may, I'd like to provide a little background on this organization since I kind of, uh, know a little bit about them. So what this organization does in large part, or one of the things they do, is they take veterans out on fishing charters. They get several volunteers to take, uh, fishing charters, you know, hunting opportunities. A lot of different outdoor events that this organization has that they use. And they'll take these veterans on these fishing trips or hunt, guided hunting trips. You know, the very good success rate. I actually, uh, met one of these individuals at a sportsman's event in, uh, suburban collection showplace. They were great people, you know, and then, you know, me being a veteran as well, they, they were more than willing to share their information with me and kind of give me kind of a background. So as you look, you know, you, they, and they have a Facebook, which I actually looked, uh, because I saw them on the agenda a couple days ago. And you can see, you know, some of the fish and, I mean, they take them all over the state. I mean, great fishing opportunities these veterans get to go on. So, I mean, it's a great organization and a great mission that they have.
Good.
Good to hear. I always like to know more. We never get really any information about what they do.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And then I know they do like a big squirrel hunting tournament, um, but yeah, they did, they did, they just did a, uh, I believe it was a walleye charter, if I'm not mistaken, or a walleye tournament. Then on the way back, they had a bunch of, you know, s- people lining the shore with American flags and everything as the veterans came in. So it was a pretty cool experience.
Okay, so the chair would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the United Veterans of Michigan, uh, gaming license, proposed resolution twenty-two-one dash seventeen.
Motion by trustee Burton, is there support?
Support.
Support by clerk Winchester. Any further discussion? It's a resolution, so we'll have a roll call.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. Derek Burton?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Last on the new business is Holly Township Properties five oh one C three application. Um, what I'm asking for is the board to grant, um, permission to move forward and set up a five oh one C three for the township as we are starting to receive these larger gifts. Um, these, both the granting organizations and this particular gift, those checks have to be, and this is an IRS thing, they have to be written to a five oh one C three. And some of these things dictate that the five oh one C three, five oh one C three should be connected to the township. Um, the Holly Heritage Foundation is a five oh one C three, but it has no connection to the township. Um, and it makes it difficult in cashing the check and then getting the check and going through that. Um, the Village of Holly, uh, just recently set up their own five oh one C three, five oh one C three. I know that in receiving grants from the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation, that's another stipulation that they have. So I, I, it's probably gonna be, we've looked into it six to eight weeks. Depending on how quickly we get the number from the IRS, it could take up to, um, several months. Um, with our, uh, gift in this particular case, we have until May to get ourselves situated to receive that. So, um, we can do that. I just wanted, before we move forward on this, wanted to bring it up to the board. Um, the one thing that we, that we would have to decide on is what exactly to call it. The five oh one C three will serve the township for anything going forward, not just the Farmstead for any grants. So my thought was that it would be the Holly Township Foundation.
Mm-hmm.
Just simply enough.
And then we keep those funds all separated and run it through?
Yep. Which they are, they go in the trust and agency, um, fund.
Yeah, those all have to be, they all have to be kept separate because you have people that you have to file on it and show it.
Yeah. So we'd be the grantee of all money coming in basically, then this five oh one C three would be?
Yep. Any other discussion?
I would move to approve moving forward with applying for a five oh one C three application, uh, naming it the Holly Township Foundation.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by clerk Winchester, support by treasurer Freeman. And I want to congratulate you on being able to say five oh one C three. I think at one point we even said five oh one C three P O. So it just doesn't always roll off the tongue.
I had it opposite.
Well, yeah.
When I had it, you caught it.
When she first printed it, I ca- I caught it. I came and I said, no, it's a five oh C three.
Five oh ones?
Yeah, we, we got caught up and we had to look the dumb thing up because it, we got caught up in it, but we got it. So any, any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Karen Winchester, yes. Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Now, we will move on to public comment on any topics. Is there anyone for public comment? Uh, Ms. McBride? And, and then Pat Feeney.
Good evening. My name is Donna McBride. Live at seven one, seven one, seven ten, East Maple, you know, on the corner down there.
Five oh one C three.
You got me all confused. Um, I wanted to say McKenzie, I thought she rocked.
Yep.
She, before she left.
If I can interrupt your public comment for just a minute, that young lady is incredible. She and her family came into the township office to see this plan. And as they're looking at it, she said, well, now, how will the access gate work over here? And we're gonna have a place to get the animals in so that they can be quarantined, so that they don't bring, I mean, she was like
Right on.
Right on it from the get-go. So she's an impressive young lady. I, I'm sorry, Donna, but thank you for that comment. I'll share that with the fans. I'm sorry, Donna, but thank you for that comment. I'll share that with the family.
Thank you. When Mr. Cullis came to the park meetings, he, or the last park meeting, he said that he was going to do things by the book now, which to me says he hasn't been doing it by the book until now. Just that was a little weird. Just wondered if all the rules were going to be like that or if they were going to be picked and choose the rules. He gave us this handbook. And I'm sorry, I only have one page.
That's all right.
That is not being followed. And I wondered if maybe if that was, if there was some reason for that. This, this is also a survey that I did on Tony, because you wanted to know the difference between what Tony Brinkler makes and what's going on elsewhere here in the state. Pretty self-explanatory. It was sent to the village, the township office, but somehow I guess it must have got lost. Also would like to know why, why tonight's agenda was not posted until after four o'clock. Thank you for letting us know that it was down. But I also know that you have this agenda way before today, that it should have been posted. If we'd have got, if we'd have done that at the park boards, people would have been coming out of the woodwork screaming transparency, cover up. You know, they're hiding in the woods. Nobody knows what they're doing out there. And it's not lost to me that a hundred and one years ago today, women got the right to vote. Still waiting, still waiting for that to happen in this little town. Evidently our rights to vote doesn't really make much difference. You can now pat me on the head and send me home and say goodbye and not listen to anything that I say. I just think that this whole park thing was a lot of back room deals. And I'm just really sad to see that things can, people can just do what they want and put who where they want. And with all of those resumes, if you'd look through the resumes and actually read them, I think that maybe that not the most qualified person. Oh, I don't know who this guy is and I'm really willing to work with anybody because we're doing so good. The park's coming along so great with the Frisbee golf course, which is basically costing us like nothing. They're doing all the work for it. And I'd just like to see the park keep going and not have to keep worrying about witch hunts and hearsay and BS. Thank you.
Pat Feeney, two ten Franklin Street. First of all, I'd like to welcome Kurt aboard and I'm looking forward to working with you. Please don't take any of our bickering and going back and forth personally. On that note of the parks board, I would like to see a written thing from your attorney. And I don't want to hear about the cost and an opinion from a legal one about questions that some of your own board members are asking, whether you have the right to do that. I'm not arguing one way or the other tonight on the same, let's get it clarified. Let's have someone legally tell us this is how we interpret it because you obviously have board members who are interpreting and saying that doesn't look the way it looks to me. The other item I'd like to speak about is that five hundred thousand. You know, I was on the board when that hundred thousand came in. Quite frankly, and I don't want to hear responses because this is our time, my time to speak on this. We were never given a full report on what that money, how much money was spent out of that. It went through a group to get the money in. Oh, by the way, it's nice, I'd like to thank the Mott Foundation for, you know, the five hundred thousand. And it's great we're not under the secrecy thing again. Because never was, when I was on the board, was it ever told who gave us the money. It was, you know, big secret, which was nonsense, absolute nonsense. Never take money like that again. We weren't Steve. We were never told who it was. We're still, they want to name anonymous. So I'm glad they finally came forward and we can do this publicly. I hope to see that we see a regular report that the public can see and that board members can explain to the public on how the money's being spent, when it's being spent and what it's being spent on. You know, I could probably point right to you tonight and ask each one of you, except for you Derek because you weren't there. The rest of you, how much of that hundred thousand was spent? Where was it spent? Where are we at with it? I mean, we heard comments in last year that, well, almost all that money is just spent. Well, no, it's not. So this time around, this five hundred thousand, I should be, you know, very clear to the public where the money's going. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Cravie eight?
Ladies first.
I just was going with the hands as they go up in order, but Mary. Did I get that pronunciation, Cravie? Okay. I'm working it. Somebody needs to make, took me a while to get Mr. Miskovich's name.
Mary Blanchard, three, four, 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 Old Creek Drive, Holly, Michigan. And I would like to thank the board for their support of the farmstead plan. The other thing I would like to thank, the Mott Foundation or the Charles Stewart Harding Mott Family for their donation. The other thing I would like to say is I am grateful to the board for going for their own five oh one C three. This has been a real concern to our group because going above fifty thousand dollars was going to have us file taxes in a totally different way. And also our attorney was concerned about that as well. So I thank you very much.
Now, Mr. Cravie.
Just got, Jacob Cravie, five oh seven Nash Street. I just have three brief things to speak on. Firstly, I would like to start off by saying the same thing I told the village council a couple of weeks ago. I know the township doesn't have a lot of purview over infrastructure in this area of Michigan. But that does not mean that you're not Michiganders. We have a lot of funding coming in from the federal government here soon with a bipartisan infrastructure package. There's talks about a larger reconciliation package that can be used on more soft infrastructure like parks, like wildlife, upkeep, stuff like that. But I just wanted to reiterate the point that I made to them, that it is very important to kind of be on the ball with feelers out, whoever you know who's a little bit above you guys in state and federal government, to make sure that this money is allocated properly. It would be a terrible waste to see that much money just be kind of biffed, especially on a smaller community like Holly Township. We don't have many people who live here in comparison to some other local areas. But that doesn't mean that our taxpayer money is any less valuable to us when we get it. Secondly, I wanted to just make a statement about the Holly Heritage Farmstead. It seems like it's pretty far in the works. It seems like there's some good work coming along. But I wanted to point out that grant money is not free money. Grant money is a gift. Grant money is something that is a great opportunity for the community. And this is just like a future reference. When we spend grant money, we should focus on spending grant money in a way that can help us bring that grant money back to our area. I find it concerning that we're getting thirty thousand dollar quotes on barn doors and we're talking about spending a hundred thousand dollars and five hundred thousand dollars. When I haven't heard a single word said about how that money's going to come back in and at what rate. I've heard a lot of talk about four H usage, but I don't see how four H usage, at least I don't have the information in front of me, how four H usage can pour back six hundred thousand dollars into the community. And if that's there and those economic statements are there, I would like those, that information to be more public. And lastly, I just have a statement on the parks board. I too would like to see some information about that particular statute that you guys brought up. This is no attack on any of your guys' character. It's no attack on Mr. Miskovich's character. It's just this type of change in policy, it has ramifications that go beyond you. It will continue to other boards and they will use your decision as a precedent. Because, no offense, Mr. Cullis, but you're not going to be supervisor forever. And we can't always say that the person who is going to be supervisor is going to use that power responsibly. And I would much rather have elected officials make the decision on vacancies with their specialties than just a broad board. And yeah, that's it. Hope you guys have a great night.
The gentleman? Yep.
Hello. Craig Giff, one, six, three, eight, eight, Tucker Road. I have a letter that I would.
Excuse me, Greg.
Yes.
What's the last name for clarification?
Giff, G I F F.
Thank you.
I have a letter and some photos of some water storm damage and a situation that's been going on for as long as I've lived in this residence. What I'm asking is that your, your membership petition, the Oakland County Drain Commission, to class this as a storm drain and take care of the necessary repairs. My neighbor and I are both losing our property with every rain. It started out as basically just a small ditch that you could walk over and now it's a twenty foot wide by fifteen foot ditch. My neighbor stands to lose his shed. I stand to lose property to the, from the center of the ditch to my house. It's eroding every single day. So I've typed up a letter for you and multiple photos.
I have your thumb drive.
Yes, and you have my thumb drive.
I've been out to your house.
Yes. But you haven't actually looked at the drain itself. You looked at the drain in front of the house. This goes along between the property.
Right.
And it's eroding both properties.
I've also met with your neighbor.
Yes. So I'd like to submit this letter to you.
Okay. Go ahead and give it to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Debbie Bartlett and I live at one, six, four, zero, two, Tucker Road, Holly, Michigan. Neighbor to Craig. Mr. Cullis, I did, I did contact him and he was kind enough to get back with me right away and point me in the direction of the Holly Township Road Commission. I did email them. And regarding the storm damage to our property, Craig, I don't know, he's lived there about six years. I've lived there four thirty-four. And this ditch between our two properties is, like you said, it is humongous. My children, used to be, my three-year-old could walk across it. And now it's so bad, our shed, we're about six feet away from our shed falling into the ditch. The last two rains I realized were quite extensive and there was a lot of rainfall, but this has been going on for the last twenty-five years. They dug the ditch out in front of Craig's house. It was just a holding area and it was a sheet flow that went across his property, which I feel really bad that he has to have to go across. But the current, the owner at that time did not like that, so the county road commission came out and they dug a ditch that from the culvert and it went around and it was funneled down between our two properties, which is cause, why it's caused extensive damage. Mr. Cullis has all of the pictures and things, but I do have some additional things for the other members of the board. And I too would like to have some sort of restitution. This house is our children's inheritance. We've paid it off, but at this point in time, we don't have, I don't even know how much longer we'll have. We've lost tremendous amounts of our yard and landscaping and it's just, it's just needs to be taken care of. And so I hope that you can help us in that regard.
I did just want to correct one thing you said. You, you mentioned the Holly Township Road Commission. I'm hoping you contacted.
Oakland, I did. Mr. Kohler at Oakland Township. Thank you.
We've had unusual rains flooding all over the township. We've removed Beaver Dam up on Grange Hall Road four times, almost as fast as, as we pull it out of there, they're back there putting it back in. We've had flooding issues. The village has had them there everywhere. I, I feel for your situation. I've been out there. We have, as Mr. Cravie was asking, I have been in contact with those people above us, the state reps and Alyssa Slotkin's office and Debbie Stabenow's office. And we actually have a grant request for one point two million dollars in with Debbie Stabenow's office right now to deal with drainage problems in Holly Township from an engineering standpoint. A gathering of easements, application. The Schwartz Creek Drain was established in eighteen ninety-five and in eighteen ninety-six, Schwartz Creek one and two. It only goes for a section of Schwartz Creek. That needs to be expanded down into North Holly Road. Mark, what's, there's another drain up there that has a funny name.
Tiffany Smith.
Tiffany Smith is another small drain that served a purpose in its time, but needs to be expanded. The drainage issue that you have over on Tucker Road, we also have it in between, it's a Hawaiian named Monoloa Lake that comes across Grange Hall and empties into Bush Lake. That's where we've pulled the Beaver Dam four times. The problem there is where the water's going after it goes into Bush Lake, it's just kind of backing up. That whole drainage problem there has had quick road washed out for two weeks. A section of, of that. So it is a problem, especially this year with the amount of rainfall we've had. We are aware of and we're looking at them and hopefully doing what we can. And I've been out there with the road commission on your problem. Part of the problem is once you go past the road right away, there's nothing the road commission can do. I know Mr. Giff's front yard is, is it safe to say you're four feet below the grade of the road?
Yes.
At least, I would think.
At least.
Yeah.
And we're, we're right, right next to him and he, he gets the worst of it across there, but.
He's, he's actually a little lower than you are.
Then it's, then it goes around and it's just, it's, the damage is so extensive and the ditching it out in response to Mr. Kohler was that they would come out and reditch the area. That's not going to solve the problem. That's just going to make the water run faster and, and more forceful through our harmony.
What's your address again?
One, six, four, zero, two, Tucker Road.
All right. And Mr. Miskovich, sorry, this will be brief. But thank you for telling me that information about the grant. If you can put in a word with those reps the next time you speak to them, dozens of people in Holly and Holly Township would love to hear back from them. Our emails and calls are fed and forwarded. I know for a fact personally, at least a dozen people.
I did contact Debbie Stabenow as well, per your request, per your recommendation.
No. And, and, and just so you know, Mr. Cravie brought up a couple of things. I meet on a monthly basis with the Oakland County Association of Township Supervisors. And as a collective group, we're working with the state reps, we're working with Alyssa Slotkin's office. We are, this, this money that is coming, they're having such a hard time deciding what we can spend it on and what we can't spend it on. Bruce Addison is the township supervisor for Addison Township. And right now, the money they're getting, there's nothing within the parameters that they can spend it on. They, there's just nothing that qualifies in their area. And other townships have those same problems. The problems that exist in communities like Ferndale and Royal Oak and Madison Heights are very different from what goes on in the rural townships. And the rural townships don't just end at Oakland County. They go all the way up through Michigan. So they're having some issues of trying to figure out the parameters that will allow everybody to be able to spend the money they're getting. Because right now, with the parameters that at least we're seeing, it's going to be difficult to spend that money for some of us. Internet infrastructure, those kinds of things. And, and there's a big pushback on that because Comcast and, and those kind of companies are a for-profit company. Why are we spending tax dollars to, to help them build their infrastructure? So there's a lot of debates that are going on and the conversations are being had. At this point, we're just waiting to see where it's going to fall and, and there's a lot of pressure. While I was in this meeting, my phone kept going off. That was Commissioner Hoffman. We've been working on something and I'm sure that's what he was calling me about. So. So we are doing that, but anytime you have questions like that or you want to stop in the office, I'm certainly going to have that conversation. Was there anybody else for, I see Joe Hutchins here. Public comments?
Just an added information on drainage. We go across Grange Hall Road, go through Lake Mauna Loa into Bush Lake. We go out of Bush Lake between the Township Beach and Lakeside Park. It goes down towards Yol' IGA, under the tracks, underground, goes across Saginaw Street, hooks to the right, goes behind the old Doc Gregg's, these two boroughs office, dumps into Benham's Lake, goes out of Benham's Lake, across Odessa into the Shihawasi. This past week and a half, it had a massive pump in Yol' IGA's parking lot to divert the water, because they put in all-new fracking and cement tile to alleviate some of the flow restrictions across into Benham's Lake. You might want to talk to DPDW about what it all involved, if that's everybody's upstream and downstream drainage, new Patterson Drain.
Yeah, and that's the Patterson Drain you're referring to.
Yeah, the Patterson Drain actually starts here at, at one of it and goes across here down through and connects in by Park Avenue and comes out and it's joined. So they put in a Patterson Drain to drain this property so they could build a school. So, and that's, that's maintained by Oakland County Drain Commission.
Yes. So yeah, we've been working with Water Resource Commission now, as it's called.
That project that was done here on the repiping of that underground river there, drain, it took about two weeks.
Yeah.
That's where they had, they wanted to get that done before they put it in Saginaw Street.
Yeah. So yeah, so we've, we've had, we've had a lot of talk about it and, and, and looking at it. And part of the problem that the water, you called it the Drain Commission, the Water Resource Commission has, is the fact that we don't have easements on these private properties to go in and make those adjustments, which is why Schwartz Creek needs to be expanded because you have that problem under Lillen Road. Next time you drive north on North Holly Road, look to the west, to the west, at where that water's supposed to go. All it is is a bunch of trees down and in there and, and it slows the water down. But until you have somebody that can go in there, until you have an easement that allows them to go in and clean it out.
Well, one other, you know, thing about maintenance, the last time the Patterson Drain was cleaned was probably before 1980, right around 1980, they came and re-drenched it. But it's all muck, so within four years, the silk settled back in. It should be addressed to open up the Patterson Drain again and clean it out because of the fallen trees and the muck. Now we fix it across the road, let's get it from up here and over there, let's get it cleaned out, alleviate the flooding problems in the township and the village.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else for public comment?
Stacy Taylor, 15566 Falk Road. So yesterday was four years that I found out my house was at threat. So originally, it was just it didn't fit on a little dirt road. And through our research, and luckily John Runish's wife and him kept the records, we have the preliminary study and recommendations, the site characterization and hydrogeological investigation of the situation going on Falk Road. So we got a lot of problems there. First of all, the development of Holly Hills is very dense and it is in a location that threatens our drinking water. There's a 20, excuse me, there's a 40-acre dump adjacent to it, so it's taken us about four years, but we've gotten the state to at least recognize that it's an impart site and that there's PFAS in it and it is in somebody's drinking water. Today, I'm going to concentrate on the flooding. So Mr. Tim Carpenter, who created this report, he knew there was going to be flooding. And he said, "The selection of a final method of cleaning up the dump will depend on the desired final use of this site and anticipated future development in the area and the risks acceptable to the community and to the MDN, MD," he says NR here, but I think it's supposed to be DEQ. So we have flooding and it's getting worse. Every, we've had three different times in the last six weeks it has breached my basement. I have a finished basement. I have carpet in my basement. Denise Cantu called me on the way home from work after I was up north for five days and she's like, "Oh my God, it's bad, hurry." So she's down there with my bisal and she's sucking up water, 18 containers full. I get home, she's got her rainbow, I've got my bisal, and then my husband's got the rigid indoor/outdoor. Three days and a lot of effort and a lot of money and a lot of electricity. So what? We went out and we got sandbags and then we got a tarp. And so we did sandbags and tarps and you know what? It breached again the other night at 4:23 in the morning. I was not happy. I think I made a lot of phone calls that day. I know I made a lot of phone calls that day. So the excavation that Holly Hills did for five months, the 900-feet-long, next to Holly Hills, excuse me, next to the dump, was 900-feet-long, it was 100-feet-wide and it was at least 50-feet deep. They were moving a semi-truck of dirt every 3.5, 4 minutes. I was timing it. This is the map right here that was created by the state that shows the exact situation as it's happening. They did not put the boundaries on that map. I specifically asked you and Kim Etheridge to fix that. That is a permanent record and it is being viewed by residents. Mr. Burton, you are 100% correct. We need way better minutes in our, in our meeting minutes. I have all the records from the 70s, 80s, and 90s. They used to tell you what actually happened at these meetings, the comments that were made, and now all it says is Stacy Taylor spoke or Denise Cantu spoke. Well, that doesn't alert the community to what the risks acceptable to the community are. This is the culvert picture where the dump is being whitewashed, now I'm not using the right words, it's like Niagara Falls. The culvert is on one side where Holly Hills is coming across, it's right there at the base of the dump. And if you walked 18 feet to the other side, it is so bad that it actually has washed out two truckloads full of gravel. And I've had George come out, take a look, and then I spent an hour talking to the guy from the road commission. He says, "We can't do anything on the dump to fix that culvert, make it any better because it's private property." I go, "Did you know it was a dump?" He did not. I talked to Dan Doig, the developer of, VP of Yes Communities. I went over there and spoke with him. I happen to have a binder full of documents. He said he did not know there was a dump. I said, "Well, that's part of the problem, sir, because you are now exacerbating," which I hate that word, "the dump." And they have stopped working at this point. I have also met, oh shoot, Mike Askins, who is in charge of development and acquisitions, he too didn't know there's a dump. Mr. Cullis said he's lying. Now, their attorney is going to be Dyke Magosse. And I said to those developers, Ken Thompson and all of them, I says, "Dyke Magosse knows there's a dump there." And I'm going to hand you a little packet here, but the land use changing going on at this location is having a permanent effect. The people on Tucker, the lady that's on the corner of Falcon East Holly, she's got a dumpster right now. Her basement ruined everything. So when I recovered the '96 report, which was not supposed to be found, this was the only documentation left at the library. There was a flood insurance study in that, that was the second and only other document in there. This was prepared for the village. I am not in a flood zone. Riviera Shores is. All of that goes up into the chain of lakes. So all of the contamination is being washed off of that dump, is going into my basement, my neighbor's garden, it's, they're standing water only, I mean, those vegetables are going to be yummy, and then it's going all up into Riviera Shores, it's going into Bush Lake, it's going into all of those lakes up there. You guys, we're messing up here big time. And I, I know y'all stand behind, we can't do anything. And I'm telling you, you don't have a choice, but you have to do something. This is getting worse, whether it's the flooding, whether it's the chemicals that are being spread, or whether it's the fact that their Class 1 wells are not 2,000 feet from that known contamination. That's Clean Drinking Water Act 399, Part 812. Tim Carpenter, over and over, said this is going to be a problem. The papers I'm going to hand to you right now, we do know that they have tested the surface waters finally for Bush and for Rice Lake. We're concerned that Rice Lake is a Springfield lake, so that's probably going to change the numbers, but we provided them with a document that showed the drain pipe. It's a Figure 23 Proposed Drainage Improvement. So they drained the really bad part and it went up into Denise's Rice Lake, yes, sir.
Do you need three more minutes?
Two would be great.
Make a motion to extend it.
Support. Support, Mr. Ruth, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So because we provided that report or this document to RRD, they're like, "Oh crap, maybe we better test it." So they did. We're waiting on the 30 fish that they've got, 20 from Bush and 10 from Rice, to see what happens with the fish. In the meantime, if you look at the flooded area, and I'm going to hand you some maps here in a second, where the seasonal pond is up by my house and buried waste, it is underwater and it's feet-deep. And that is always dried out by this time of year. If you go down by Ted's house at the bottom part where the cotton trench is on the dump, which is part of the worst part of the dump, then it's standing water and acres of it. Those mosquitoes are carrying all of that contamination, those trees are going to start falling. I'm just telling you that we're witness at firsthand, the people that live there, and most of my neighbors have lived there well over 40 years. So the papers I'm going to hand you today, the first one is a practical method for estimating the impact of land use change on surface water, groundwater recharge, and wetland hydrology. Every bit of that is important because Holly, underneath Holly Hills is the recharge station for the drinking water. It is the top of the Portland Moraine and is a glacial outwash. They've already altered that, that's why we have flooding. They have standing water that is over 30-feet-deep over acres on Holly Hills site currently. They have caught a trench where they realized it's flooding Falk Road and Denise's mailbox. They finally did it about three weeks with one bulldozer. It's all solid clay. They ended up putting some rocks, that's still understanding water, and then they cut a trench that goes that way into the wetlands, which they anticipate filling in and building on it in long-term. The second page, this was Mark Cornwell, by the way, 1997. This is Foster and Swift and their zoning and land use. They say they're capable with complicated situations. We need an ad hoc committee, we need time with the attorney, we need you to see these documents. This is my husband's map of the changes. This is Oakland County. They said they could not develop that land with one-acre parcels with 105 to 55 units because of significant wetlands, including Michigan nature, natural features inventory, prairie fence. They probably already destroyed that. That's why they're having the flooding over there. Then we have the buried waste, which shows, and that goes right with my husband's document to show that where the buried waste is, is now standing water. My dog licks her feet when she comes in. Hope God there's no contamination on it. And lastly, I'm going to hand you Dyke Magosse's letter. This is 1994. They know they're going to contaminate this area, they know the runoff is a problem. They created a document for every one of the big hurdles, and that was in 1992 over the discharge in the Shihawasi, the seven-foot clay barrier. And I said to Ken Thompson and Mr. Askins and Mr. Doherty, when I'm talking to them at the end of the road yet the other day, I'm like, you know, they did their, we didn't know any of this, and he kind of got in my grill. He's like, "What, are you a geologist?" I'm like, "No, but y'all made me learn all of this and now I know it. And this is happening to our community. And if we do not step up for our community now, we'll not only ruin it for us, but for every person that lives here in our future." So I thank you for your time and I am asking for you guys to create some sort of a committee that we can, they will sit and listen and understand because y'all's own planners are some of the most important documents in here. And almost all of the warnings have been said that it's going to happen, including the flooding, and it's happening, and it's not acceptable, and it is ruining my basement and it is making me crazy. When I'm up at 4:30 in the morning, down there stomping on towels and, it's not acceptable, guys. I have fought way too long and way too hard for you all to get this right. And I please look forward to your help.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, one last thing. I went to-
See, under your foot.
Oh, thank you. I went to the village offices when this flooding occurred because it is their property that that is crossing into mine, which is called a trespass, which the attorneys I'm talking to, that were recommended by the NRDC, said trespass is the way I want to go, right? So I sat with Mr. Nicholas Klempp and with Jerry Walker for about an hour and a half and then I followed up with a 15-minute with Mr. Kinderman. And Jerry Walker's position is that there's nothing they can do to prevent the exacerbation of their dump, but we have to take it up one-on-one with Yes Communities. The village is going to show no support in keeping that water off, on, off of my property and my neighbor's property. And that's not acceptable because that is his property. It is a 201 facility, it is an impart site, it is being exacerbated.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Denise Cantu, 15600 Falk Road, Holly, 442. Pretty much, and she got so many minutes, she said everything I wanted to say, but I, because you've got so many. But I really want to stress the part about, I mean, I was going to come up here about flooding, but I want to first stress the part about, we've got to remember, that's the Marshall Sandstone Aquifer. It lacks a seven-foot clay barrier. It's a, and it's supposed to be a protected aquifer. We watched for five months straight, them take truckload after truckload, I'm talking thousands of truckloads, for five months of sand that they use to make their, that they're going to use to make their roads. Then they filled it in with God only knows what, and now we're having flooding. So yes, George, I know that we've been having a lot of rain lately, but I'm talking now, every single rain, it's flooding somewhere. My driveway is washing out, my barn is flooded. I just have a few more things on here. My thing was, who is protecting us? You know, when we went to that, to talk to Jerry Walker and he told us to take it up with Yes Communities, Holly Hills themselves, who, isn't that your job? It's like no one's juris, that's our, that's our answer all the time. That's not our jurisdiction, that's not our jurisdiction, it's no one's jurisdiction. Who's protecting the people? I mean, come on! Seriously, I'm going nuts. And when he told that, when Jerry said, "Go take it up with Yes Communities," that's like fighting the devil himself. We don't have enough money to take it up to them. It's time to start protecting our earth. I mean, it's, we have so much. Four years ago today, right?
Yes, sir.
We were told to find something at one of the first meetings we came to. We found, we have found so many things that each one should be stopping what's happening. No, I just want to make sure that that's the one, my three minutes are not yet, right? It's like bigger, there's even someone, and now it's, I know, I know there's one more thing. Oh, the size of their lake over there that they've made in Holly Hills, it has like fish or something in it already, there's frog, something's jumping, there's movement in the water, I have a videotape of it. So now, and now it's a piece of, like another thing came, I said, "Look, they have an island in their land now," or in their lake. It, it's huge, it's like 300 by 300, or maybe 200 by 300. I think bigger three, it's huge, someone needs to, it's just a problem. I think that's it. No, one very last thing. If we're getting this already and they haven't even paved, what is going to happen to us once they pave all that? And they're planning out taking the rest of the forest out and paving that too. Someone's got to protect us. Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment? Was that you, Angie, or are you just scratching your nose? Sold! All right. With nothing more to come before this board, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:25.